Evening everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council for Tuesday, September 19th. We'll call Councilmember Barnes.
Present.
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Tuna.
Here.
And Mayor Matina.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Kelly, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for joining us tonight. If you are here to speak on an agenda item, please wait for that item to come up. If you have something else you'd like to discuss, we have citizen input points at the back. Last chance to fill that out and bring that on up. Next, we have acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any urgency items tonight?
Madam Mayor, I've moved to accept the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. We're going to waive the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration. Approve the minutes of the city council's regular meeting of September 5th. Adopt the proposed resolution accepting construction of the Geiselman Street waterline replacement project. Bid 1701 by Green Right Away Constructors, Inc. And authorize the filing of the notice of completion. And approve application number 2017-029 with staff recommendations for the Canocci Challenge bicycling event to take place on city streets October 7th, 2017. Anyone like to discuss anything? Anyone from the public? Okay, now I'll take a motion.
One moment.
One moment, please.
David, you know, we're designated as the caterer for the Canocci Challenge event. And, you know, there's a financial gain on that, and so I'm not sure if I should recuse myself from that or remove it.
Yeah, you should probably recuse yourself from that. Because it's on the consent agenda, then you do not have to leave the room or leave the dice. What has to be reflected in the minutes is that you do not participate in that particular item.
Okay, so would we approve the consent agenda minus that item?
No, we can approve the consent agenda at one vote. However, you have now disclosed that you have potential conflict of interest with respect to item 4D, and therefore you will not be voting on that one. And make sure, and move and get the minutes back next meeting, we need to make sure that that would be reflected in the minutes.
But we can still make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
Correct.
And he can still vote.
For the other items, correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll move motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With the notation.
With the notation, okay. Aye.
Okay, public presentation in request. Do we have any citizen input tonight? Yay. Melissa. I'm assuming this is Melissa Fulton, Chamber.
Thank you. Doesn't matter, I'll protect. Melissa Fulton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the city for the wonderful help that they gave us in putting on the 38th Annual Clear Lake Seaplane Splash-In this past weekend. As usual, the city stepped up. Dunk Rider, Public Works, Brad Rasmussen, the Police Department, whatever we need to put on a community event, the entire city steps up and helps us. And it was a great event. We had, out of 20 seaplanes that registered, our furthest traveled pilot came from Minnesota, and then we had some from San Diego, Vancouver, and Arizona, as well as Nevada and Oregon. So Lake County represented itself very well to all of these pilots. They can't comment enough on how friendly the community and all of the committee people are. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand how much we appreciate your assistance. We can't put on these events without that kind of assistance. And we even had to call Public Works and ask them to hold up taking out the ramp because we did have one seaplane that needed repair. That was accomplished this afternoon, and I noticed as I drove by that he was able to fly home. So, and he was served very well by Tom's Aircraft Service out at Lamson. So, all in all, a great job by everyone, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Great event. Nancy Rezika.
Hi Nancy.
Hi.
Shout out also for the wonderful Kiwanis breakfast that several of you worked on. We really enjoyed it. I didn't have to cook Saturday morning before the soccer games at West Side Park. Anyway, I'm here to speak about us trying to pull more traffic off of Highway 29. We need to increase our sales tax and, as, I've been out of Lake County a lot lately, down in San Francisco on the judicial thing, and Sacramento for some things. And when I come back, I realized, you know, the sign out of Williams says Clear Lake, and in Highway 101, it says Clear Lake. And people don't see the lake from highways 29 and 53. And I don't know whether it's the city council's place, or the county of Lake, or the APC, but can't we get some signage that says scenic route to Lakeport and scenic route to Clear Lake? Because there's a lot of traffic going to the coast and going to the Napa Valley, and the only place you really see the lake is from Highway 20. So, Lakeport, there's no port in sight or the lake, and Clear Lake, off of the highways, there's no lake in sight. So, food for thought. I don't know where to go with this.
We should probably just give that change from Clear Lake to Lakeport, of course.
Well, anyway, it's just so simple. I see other communities that pull traffic off of freeways, and we tend to take the scenic route to see what's going on in the town. And when you do that, you slow down and you spend money. So, I'm very disappointed that Hall Dollar General is going on South Main Street. A lot of people have been getting my ear about it, writing letters to the editor. It just seemed it would be better to have them up on Highway 29, so the city would still get the sales tax revenue, but we would capture some of those people either going to the coast to the Napa Valley. Anyway, the other item is weeds. You know, I'm always kind of say about signs and weeds. And I've mentioned this before, and again, I don't know what's the fire department or the city, but you have a beautiful park over here. It's always pristine. One lady told me she watched me mow the lawn three times in one place as she sat at Park Place. Try and get some staff to whack the weeds next to buildings on Main Street, or the fire department, or someone. And there's several parcels that are fire hazard. We've had all summer to take care of this. And it just, anyway, food for thought. How do we get some of the weeds whacked? I know it should be the businesses' responsibility, but some of the businesses are not occupied in, I think if you gave me a crew of two guys with weed whackers, I could get it then in the morning. Signages still seem to be a problem. I was told to take up my market for lease sign, a letter. I did that, but I see numerous banners around town, larger than the required sign for sale. Anyway, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks Nancy.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You know, it occurs to me that when you go up 101, and if you go straight up 101, you get to the Avenue of the Giants, and it says Scenic Alternative. And if you missed that, you've really missed an incredible, beautiful part of California. And I think that by going on 29, you missed an incredible part of California by not going along the lakeshore. And I think that's a great idea, to put a sign up that says Scenic Alternative. You know, we've always, the county, and I think the city agrees, that it's the gateway to Lake County. And when you go around that corner outside of Clear Lake Oaks, and you see Canocci majestically in the background, it is breathtaking. And I always looked forward to that back in the day when I was coming back from LA. That might be something that we could work out with ABC or whatever.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you Nancy.
All right, next we have the presentation of certificates of appreciation for the sponsors of the 2017 National Night Out event. Our National Night Out was a huge success, even though it was a million degrees outside.
Ask Batman.
Yeah, yeah. Glad you wanted to say some.
So I want to just talk about our event a little bit. This National Night Out, what it is, is it's a police and city and community building partnership that's intended to bring people together and build partnerships to have safer neighborhoods and safer communities in our town. So, we've been putting this event on for several years, and this year, like prior years, we had many businesses, organizations, and other groups that assisted us by either providing advertising, providing raffle prizes, providing equipment that we needed to use to hold this, and also providing services to run the event, cook food for us, and do those kind of things. So, I just really want to thank all of our businesses, organizations, and other groups in our community that always come forward and help us with this great project. And we could, absolutely could not do it without the support of all of you. So, we definitely want to sincerely thank you for all that. So, with that, we've got some certi, the mayor has some certificates, and we're going to call all the names, and if you could, when you get called, come up and please stand here and remain here until everyone is called, so we can get a photograph. And the first one is Bruno Shop Smart. Do we have anybody here? Clear Lake High School, class of 2019. Come on up.
Thank you.
Espinod Street Neighborhood Watch. Lakeport Grocery Outlet.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you.
Face painting by Kathy.
Thanks Kathy.
Jeff Morinard.
Kiwanis Club of Lakeport.
KXBx. Lake County.
KXBx is here.
Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Lake County Amateur Radio Society.
Lake County Fair.
Yes, they're here.
This one's yours.
Lake County News.
Lake Event Design.
She's here.
Yep. Lakeport Cinema 5. Lakeport Main Street Association.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lakeport Pizza.
Go down the hall.
Main Street Bicycles. Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Pack and Mail.
Sir Pro of Lake County.
Thank you, sir.
St. Mary Immaculate Parish.
Suzie Q Donuts.
The Nerd Cave.
Valerie Schwefler, she's not here. And Batman.
Woo!
Thank you, Batman. Thank you, Batman. If we could, let's figure out how to get a quick picture here of everybody.
Yeah, I gotta get it.
Tall ones in the back.
Tall people in the back. It's like a school picture.
Yeah, I just want to say, because of all these people, we're able to provide the whole evening free of charge to the community, all the raffle prizes, all the food. It's a great event. We couldn't do it without all of you here, because I really appreciate it.
Say cheese.
Cheese.
Got it? Yeah, thank you. Thanks again.
And Batman was such a big hit. All the kids had such a great time with Batman. Thank you for being here tonight, Batman.
We need development director, our lakefront revitalization plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. I'm very excited to bring this one forward to you guys. We've been working on this plan for the Lakeport, Lakefront Revitalization Plan for approximately a year and a half, and it's here before you this evening for your review and consideration for adoption. Also with me this evening is Steve Knoll with Design Workshop, whom the city partnered with to complete this plan. And additionally, before I go too far, I definitely want to thank my associate planner, Dan Chance, and also Lilda Schop, who put countless hours and definitely kept this thing on track to get to where it is here this evening. And then also, of course, I'd like to thank the many folks in the audience who attended public meetings and workshops over the past year and a half. Without the tremendous input of the community, we'd not be able to truly state that this is a shared community vision, and that this plan adequately reflects the desires of the community. Following the drafting of the alternative plans, Design Workshop and staff held several public input sessions, including online surveys, and we got over 750 responses between attendance and also those online surveys. A lot of us, thanks to the school, they let us give some public presentations over there, and then they also allowed us to pass out flyers to get people online to throw out those surveys. And that made a tremendous amount of, a tremendous help. It's always valuable to get all that input in there. The planning commission recognized that this plan was, and valued all that input that we got as well. They made a couple of minor changes, but overall during their meeting last month, they made a recommendation that your council consider adopting this plan. The plan focuses both on public and private property along the lakefront between Clear Lake Avenue to the north, and then C Street to the south. Although not primarily focused on the Main Street area, this plan does analyze the importance of strengthening that connectivity between the waterfront and the Main Street area. And before I really pass this over to Steve, so he can go through the nuts and bolts of the plan, I just want to take an opportunity to kind of pontificate from a planning perspective how important of a tool this plan is, and the design and implementation of future projects on the waterfront. The only negative feedback that I've really gotten, received in regards to this plan is the lack of a funding component. Yes, unfortunately, since the end of redevelopment, we don't really have a direct linkage of monies to this plan, but I think that kind of solidifies also, you know, why such a plan is valuable. The city has a proven track record of obtaining grants to complete projects. Some of the most notable recent examples in the waterfront area include the ADD upgrades that are underway for the Carnegie Library Building, to get that building back open to the public, and then also the completion of the much-needed new bathroom there at the Fifth Street Pole Launch. The adoption of a community-supported plan such as this adds tremendous strength to any future grant application, and the city intends to seek grant and other funding opportunities pretty quickly, once this plan is adopted. I think one of the areas that we're most excited about that came out of the public input session is just, we already live, but this kind of quantifies that the importance of the promenade, or the continuous walking path along the entire lakefront, is a very, very highly unpopular feature that the community would like to see in this area, and we look forward to kind of seeking out grant funding to kind of get that going. In regards to attracting private investment, it's been my experience that developers don't mind being creative, but they like to do so kind of in a predictable block. And a plan like this kind of provides that framework, that basic foundation, that someone coming in from the outside can pick it up and kind of know where the community, and what the community wants to see in a certain area. And so I think that's going to really help attracting that investment moving forward in the future. Lastly, this plan is designed to be flexible and implementable in an incremental fashion in kind of a realistic approach. This is not something that's going to be all of a sudden done within a year period. We're going to take pieces of this at a time, and you can really see that this plan is designed to take that approach. That's most evidenced in Section 4, which is the final recommendations and implementation section. Specifically, you'll see on page 53, and I know that Steve has this map in his upcoming presentation, the project area is broken into nine distinctive areas, each containing short-term and long-term recommendations for implementation, along with kind of analysis of existing constraints and opportunities for each of those zones. And it also includes, you know, some features that you don't see in some of our older documents, and that's kind of image examples, or pictorially reflecting the community's vision for each area. So, with that said, it's my hope that following Mr. Knoll's presentation, and getting additional feedback from the public, that the council will consider adopting this lakefront plan, and staff is excited to move forward with the implementation stage.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, city council members, and the audience, as well as those watching on camera, TV. As Kevin mentioned, my name is Steve Knoll. I'm with Design Workshop. We are landscape architects, land planners, who do a lot of work in community enhancement, revitalization plans throughout the state. We've been very thrilled to be involved with this process, particularly because, of course, the beauty of the lake itself, but also, as Kevin described, really the number of people that were passionate and showed up for these public meetings. I have about a 15-minute presentation, just to give you a really high-level overview of what the document is about. And for those who haven't seen it, it is available on the website to review. Hopefully you've all reviewed it, have some questions, comments. And then, of course, with that, then, as Kevin described there, hopefully some of these things will see implement over the next number of years. It's a little bit different, because last time, I sat where Nick is, and I could look at what I'm talking about, so.
We like to make it difficult.
Should I stand on that side, look at the screen? That'd be easier.
Okay.
So, I'll, I guess I will speak to the screen.
You're good, right there.
So, as I mentioned, introductions are done, talked about the existing information, really giving the public outreach a little bit, preliminary concepts, and of course, as Kevin described, the implementation section, which is, I think, where you can really start to look at some opportunities as we move forward. The purpose is really to take an implementable approach to the process, because I think one of the tasks of Kevin and Dan said, first of all, is, again, this isn't an document to sit on a shelf, it's intended to be used. And so with that, it really had more of a robust effort of being practical about some of the things. As Kevin mentioned, redevelopment funding is no longer available, and that was probably the premise of some of the previous documents. So, very limited opportunities, but also a lot of opportunities as well when you kind of get into it. Part of us to understand the existing conditions, and particularly from the economic perspective. So, we had DAE Economics, who did the economics study, the social economics assessment, as well as we had a firm, Ring Conguine, the environmental assessment of the waterfront area. And then finally, as Kevin did mention, this is meant to be used in many ways. One is for you as decision-makers to make some educated decisions on how to move forward with parts of it, available for grant funding. As Kevin mentioned, the developers like to know what the community's thinking about, as well as people that are over here that want to reinvest their own money. It's really planned for all. The area, initially, from the request for proposal, included the area from C Street, from our Clear Lake, Clear Lake all the way down to C Street. As we got into it, as Kevin described, the area of these properties here had just as much influence. You'll see that they've been wrapped up into the process as well. So, it includes the primary waterfront area, and then anything in front on the north, onto a Main Street itself, both public and private property. The objective is really identifying some of the current uses of the properties that are existing now, understanding some of the opportunities, although some limitation with those. Short and long-term goals for the shoreline area particularly, because that is probably the most well-accepted and interesting part of the community. Best use for some of the vacant, unutilized properties was an important part, and that's particularly the city property and the school district property specifically. The process itself, we started out with stakeholder meetings. We had a few group meetings with different organizations and business owners. Then we had two, a series of two public meetings, which public participated, provided their input, engaged in some of the development of the plan. Then, of course, we're here tonight presenting to the city council. And throughout the process, we had regular meetings, what we call the management team, which are the core team, a number of city staff, and our design team. So, what the existing conditions section in the document is about, it really looks at the land use, how it aligns with your zoning, looks at the physical conditions, as I mentioned, social, economic conditions, economic conditions, as Lakeport is within not just the city itself, but in the county, and what they call the target market, which is the broader audience that might come to Lakeport. Then, of course, the environmental conditions along the waterfront, because that's an important part to consider as you move forward with potential funding and grants for improvement of those areas. Of course, there's been a number of studies done for the city in the past. You could probably add to that the hotel study that's either currently going or is in near completion. And so this is, we did take a look at all this, making sure that we're not repeating things, or just bringing forward elements that actually still had some validity and made sense within this process. So, really, the three challenges were circulation, parking, roadways, and wayfinding, as I think a woman mentioned earlier, getting people not just off the highway, but just... a woman mentioned earlier, getting people not just off the highway, but just when they're on Main Street down to the waterfront. The idea about the private property and existing parcel configuration, a lot of long, narrow lots along the water, typically difficult when you start thinking about redevelopment, reinvestment. And of course, the economic viability, when you look at the report about how Lakeport positions itself, and maybe some ways that they need to look in the future about attracting different type of reinvestment. Of course, the opportunities is connecting the main street to the waterfront. I think that's probably the most obvious, no one really sees the water cliff that pass Main Street, I mean, the Main Street downtown area. So really, how do you let people know that they are coexisting? Enhancing the local shop amenities is important. And you know, building off some of the existing uses that you have, events, the one, the National Night Out that was just talked about, as well as a sea plane and two grade exams of things you have, how you build off that. And then, I guess, a big piece of the collaboration with the private, with the property owners, specifically the school district, because that's the biggest piece of land that you might have, provide some sort of public amenity. The public outreach, mentioned the management team, stakeholder meetings, did have a few conversations with the Unified School District. In fact, I think there was a presentation to them, and as Kevin mentioned, the high school particularly was important about weighing in on things. We did have a booth at the summer concert, and ironically, there was a lot of good input. I mean, usually you hear those things when people walk by, but there was a lot of energized people. I guess it was just the mood of the night, but enjoyed that one. Of course, online surveys of somewhere near 500 to 700, I can't remember the last number, is really important. And then, of course, presentation to board and, you know, working with city staff. So really, robust public outreach, which I think is really, will benefit when you start moving forward with some sort of opportunities for grant or reinvestment funding. So when we got through the process, we came up with really three preliminary concepts. One was to focus on the promenade, and in all three, and we're not going to go through all different alternatives, because as we got through these alternatives, we started going back to the public, realized that there isn't one alternative that fits all. So the flexibility is plan-important, but for the sake of this discussion tonight, I'm just going to highlight the one area, the three areas, or the four primary areas, and what consists with all of them. So as, as the public weighed in, the promenade was probably the most important element for them. And as we talked about the promenade, it's really the area from here all the way down, and actually extends down to Willow Creek if possible, recognizing that's private property. But there was a very strong desire for the community to have that connectivity from Clear Lake all the way down to C Street. And so each plan had different variations, how this waterfront was treated. Some of them were formalized, some a little looser. So that was part of why there was some opportunities to show how that might play out in different The next was what we called the focus area, which was really the city and the school district property. You can imagine, there's probably 1,000 different alternatives which we do for that. But we came up with three different ones, and some of the things that came out were, of course, the opportunity to combine those two parcels in some capacity, and really make it a bigger whole. Providing some actually connectivity through Seventh Street was consistent with all the plans, so that that way, there's a little bit better movement, and then finding a way to reorganize this area in order to make a better open space and public, public open space area for a variety of uses. If I'm talking too fast, let me know. Sometimes I get going. Then finally, the parking and circulation, really that is, that's really this area here. I mean, if you go down there today, you realize there is, you know, you have some of the primary real estate is given toward parking, boat parking, that type of thing. And so ways, this idea was how can we reclaim some of this area for public use and more recreation, was both active and passive, without compromising what's important here is actually, you know, people do come here with their boats, they want to be able to park them, have direct access. So really kind of clean up the waterfront. So the idea, those three alternatives, what different ways that might play itself out. And then finally, there was the discussion about the hotel development. And so there's three scenarios that were played, kind of in the, within the alternatives. One is utilizing the city's parcel up here to do a modest hotel site that would front onto the school district property. We did a few studies to see what if we introduced a hotel down on some private property with some city property on it downtown specifically, and then, of course, looking at just, you know, one of many alternatives, what that Willow Creek and C Street properties combined might look like. So here we'll talk about the recommendations and the implementation. So as Kevin mentioned, when we looked at this, we said, okay, there are literally different areas in which we should focus and have recommendations. One is the promenade itself, one is this area, the area here, which we really call Library Park, the lakefronty district, which is the area in between the two, this opportunity special site, and of course, the school district site, and what we call the zone up here. On to the left, there were the priorities that came out of the public polling, primarily from the most important down to not always at the least important, but these are the ones that rank high in what people would like to see along the, within this improvement district and within the plan. We did a, there's a section, we talked really on a higher level, things with how you might want to enhance your tourism promotion, funding opportunities for business retention, recruitment. We find many communities, a lot of energies is spent to try to attract new business versus really seeing how you might help your current businesses. Looking at some of the environmental conclusions and recommendations, and how that might play out for funding, and then really reevaluate some of your temporary facilities and special events, how that might play out as you currently have them, and what you'd like to see in the future. So we'll start with the first zone, which is called the resort enhancement zone. So it really makes up of all the private properties that are currently, for the most part, hotel accommodations. There may be some, some over, it's longer-term living conditions there, but it's really the area that fronts the waterfront. As I mentioned before, long, narrow lots, for the most part, this is probably the biggest of the parcel up there. Looking at the idea that the waterfront is why people come here, and it's important to retain that type of resort tourism aspect. The plan recommends that you continue to use this area as a tourism-focused area in whatever way you can. Using TOT, tourist accommodation tax, maybe help with funding, street improvements, all the way down to provide public access, working with the private owners to provide public access along the waterfront. Long-term is, again, identifying some of the funding sources, all the way down to, you know, creating a hotel lodging association with the destination market association kind of is the focus of that. And this is just a few images that might embellish what that would look like. The multi-use, the multi-use event space, which is really, received a lot of attention and interest in the public outreach, was the combined properties of the city and the county, I mean, and the school district, and including, let me get this. And this parcel here, which is kind of an out parcel, is somewhat part of that, and was discussed quite a bit. So the first thing that's talked about was to really provide a valuation of the value to the school district property. This is just to make sure that where the school district is and where the city is, if there's some sort of opportunity to purchase or work collaboratively on some sort of agreement on how that, this property, these properties combined might be developed. All the way down to prepare a site master plan for this area. Well, the intention wasn't of this process, was a divide, actual design. If something comes out of this, and you actually consolidate the properties or have some sort of agreement, the next step would really then delve into a full master plan on what all the amenities and the uses from the cities, from the community's perspective should be here. And then finally, in order to do that, there'll be some sort of time in which the area would need to be rezoned to open space rather than the resort high-density residence where it currently is zoned at. And then long-term would be many things that are listed in there, all the way from working with the groups, different groups with the sea planes, different events we're going to have, or making sure that it's a flexible space that accommodate and not limit what the opportunities are depending what's the latest and greatest in the wool of events. And just a few pictures that kind of support what that might look like. So this is the public launching area, which is really, as I mentioned before, it's the area that accounts for the majority of the parking and circulation from an auto and view, from a vehicle perspective. This is really, there's a recommendation that the city develop what we call waterfront strategic task force, which is really to evaluate the current and future voting-related needs. And I think that's really bringing in all the people that have an interest in this area, specifically on that type of use, and finding out if there's a better way to use the space to make it more efficient in the way they navigate through it, as well as making more opportunity for the public to use it in a more enhanced way. Again, enhancing the connectivity through these areas downtown. Right now, there's not a whole lot of elements that really bring you down here, so what are the opportunities to bring that from Main Street down to this area? And then some of the long-term things is secure funding for stormwater management, which is one of the elements that, you know, you probably go after and find ways, because there are a lot of open pipes and stuff that are subject to potential funding, all the way down to maybe even considering relocating things like the waste disposal station, so it's not right in the middle of this area to another spot, it's just off, you know, out of the way. And then maybe some images of what that would look like. So the special commercial zone district is that area we described, where an opportunity to look for a hotel, joint efforts, you know, either that or a private developer that's interested in the property. As Kevin mentioned, in this process with the planning commission, it was desire, their desire was to expand that to include what wasn't vacant at the time, was one of the banks, and now is, and saying, well, there's nothing more than anything different between that and that, as far as what that opportunity area would be. So this is looking at that and say, you know, what are the opportunities to bring something downtown and revitalize? Not necessarily revitalize, just to set that thing in the middle of where the community, where the downtown area would be. So, of course, this is all private property, so it really have to be agreement, working with them. Specifically, there may be ways in which the city might be able to purchase the property and sell the other piece, I mean, the piece that's on the other, you know, further north, I mean, that's zone, resort, resort as well, so there's some opportunities to play with that. As well as with this hotel market study, you might shed some light on how important it would be to have that. So there's a number of solutions to be shown in the, in the document, as well as some of the recommendations on how that might play out. And then, one of the key elements, I think, is with that, is to make sure that the design of anything that's built downtown maintains a character of the historic downtown and in some reflection of that. The lakefront commercial zone, it's truly interesting, because this is an area that you would think would be highly popular and rented and fully occupied, and it hasn't. So really looking at ways to might elevate that and make it more apparent, even just, again, visibility from Main Street down to there, no one really is aware of that. So, but there are some recommendations on how that might be, even to the point of looking at possibly open up the alley behind these to create another experience where people move around and enjoy those businesses. A few more pictures? And as we mentioned, the promenade was top and foremost on everybody's mind as far as that continuation all the way up and all the way down, which this doesn't go as far as the idea, but really finding the opportunity to enhance that, and what that looks like could vary depending on the location. So, of course, if it's down here, it might be a little looser in the elements of beach or activity, it might be more formalized here. So again, that'd be part of a master plan, a detailed design for the promenade area specifically. Library Park is fairly, fairly well-done. I mean, there's not a whole lot, I think the main thing is really understanding how Carnegie Library really play into that as a public facility, or if it's a concessionary facility, how you might utilize that. I mean, there's some small things, such as elements of, you know, moving, coves and tables, and, you know, very small details, but for the most part, it's a very vibrant park when it's activated and when it's not, and it's very passive and really a nice place to kind of hang out. So there was just some minor recommendations, what might happen there. And then finally, with the Willow Point C Street revitalization area, recognizing this is, at one time was speculated, they have something more than what's there now. Of course, it is an opportunity site, but it's all private, so recognizing how this might play to the broader perspective of the community with regard to lodging, public access, and those type of things. And, of course, being private property, again, it'd be working with them directly and making sure that plans that may come forward or consist with maybe what the vision of the community would embrace for this area. And then finally, the Main Street Business District, just the area that fronts right onto it. Recommendations, simple, like expand business hours. We recognize a lot of the businesses, they're owned by the, they're locally owned and operated by the person that owns them, and when 5 o'clock comes, it's tough to stick around any longer. Yet, there are things that other communities do, such as dedicate one day a month or two days, or one day a week in which they are committed to staying open longer. Looking at other ways, social media, different methods in which to identify the Main Street District as being a destination, not just within Lakeport itself, but within Clear Lake area, the whole surrounding area. And then that kind of wraps up the presentation.
Great, thank you. You guys did a great job, and the meetings you guys held with the community were wonderful with the little clickers, it was very engaging, and you had a great turnout. It's just good to see all the information that people brought, and then you bring it all together. So any questions?
The one question I had has to do with the CEQA environmental review. Why is it that we don't need one if we're going to be thinking about changing the waterfront?
It would be project-driven, but...
Yeah, correct. There's a statutory exemption for planning studies, which this falls in that. But this study being completed by no way frees up any future plan from having to comply with CEQA. So if we have a proposal that wants to locate one of these areas, then you would be subject to CEQA at that time.
Hey, Ryan?
Yeah, following on that CEQA, I was wondering, Kevin, if you were able to get clarification regarding the Mountain House Conservation Bank? Because when I looked it up, I Googled it, it's on Eastern Alameda County. I wasn't sure if that mitigation bank would apply as far as one of our mitigating conditions.
Yeah, I double-checked that. I mean, I looked at that and saw the reference to Seagull, and believed that it was in regard to Star Seagull, but doing...
I found the Seagull Valley one, actually, that is.
That one is. But the other, the other one, no, I don't, I believe that's an incorrect statement, so. That, and then also, you know, you had mentioned that there's some other typos and some other things. I think the table of contents has a couple items that still need to line up. We'll take care of that. That's, you're correct, that one is not one that's within the Lake County area, and so our credits for future wetlands remediation or things like that would not apply. But the Seagull one does.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question. One of the notes up there was pertaining to people wanting more shopping, more restaurants down on the waterfront, but as I walked down Main Street, I noticed we have quite a few empty storefronts and, you know, businesses kind of coming and going. Is one of the plans to build more storefronts to put businesses in while we have empty storefronts on Main? And is there any kind of research that's been done in a similar demographic to ours that shows that this will, you know, bring in the people and the money we need to keep these businesses open?
The focus, I think, if, you know, one of the, one of the slides that Steve just showed of specifically that waterfront commercial area, you know, it became kind of blatantly apparent, it's like, okay, this is an area that should be thriving. It's right next to Library Park, which has a lot going on, very highly used by the community and visitors. And so kind of asking that question, why are those storefronts vacant? I mean, there are some references to considering, you know, maybe looking at future ordinance changes and things like that to maybe allow some other vending and things to go there, but the primary focus would be filling the existing vacant commercial buildings directly around the waterfront area, and by default, Main Street as well. I don't know, Steve, if you want to...
Yeah, and I think when you, if the economic report that was done really explained the amount of retail that you probably could see expanding in the near future. Retail wasn't high on right now as far as a big boost, or you've probably seen more as opportunity for office space, housing, lodging, that type of stuff. So it is a market-driven situation, unfortunately. But with, but then again, I think with, with anything, as the community grows or people move into the area, there's some opportunities for those to come forward. And so, you know, there's no silver bullet how to make that happen.
Well, part of the process was looking at what do we have, and then going, okay, what's the dream? So make a dream board. And so we drew all over... And so we drew all over a map of the lake, and that, you know, so then when people start dreaming, they go, I want this and I want that. Doesn't mean that it's all going to happen right away, but I've been dreaming of a promenade forever, and now at least we have one in writing, so.
I mean, to kind of go back to the last portion of Councilman Bart's question too, as far as what other, have we seen success in other communities? I think, yes, and I think what comes out of that is a general trend. You kind of see, kind of the fallout of Main Street used to be a location where you would come and do all your day-to-day activities. The post office used to be downtown, grocery stores used to be downtown, all those items used to be all in this downtown location. Well, those have moved out to the fringes, and that's not just a Lakeport thing, that's something that's, you know, nationwide. So, successful downtowns have kind of rebuilt themselves as, you know, a destination place, not, maybe not necessarily somewhere where you go specifically for one store, but you go down to that downtown area for an experience, some sort of entertainment venue where, you know, we have the lake right at our doorstep. How do we bring that in to make people go down to that destination and then by default, hey, you're down here, you know, you're down here for a couple hours, let's stop, get something to eat, let's check out the stores. So, I mean, I think that's really kind of the mantra that's trying to be created, is making that a destination area.
What we have most control over is all the public space and making that a place for people want to be, and then that brings more business and kind of the catalyst for that, with what we can do with our public space too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve?
Just one last question. I threw out all of the voluminous amounts of verbiage in there. I think I only saw the word marina maybe mentioned a couple times. And I think I talked to Kevin, there was some kind of a problem that hit you or something like that. But what's the outlook for that? I mean, this is a long-term document, but I didn't see that mentioned a lot. Is that something that, we're not bringing people from around the lake to come and bring their boats and then shop up on Lakeport or whatever?
You mean for expansion?
What's the perspective of that on the ideal of having some kind of a marina? And I think it even said semi-permanent or something like that, like you used to have at Holiday Harbor, where people would park their boats and they would be there and board and something like that. I just saw that briefly mentioned, so it's not a big element, it wasn't a big need that was expressed. How...
Yeah, that's, that's a good question in the sense that when we looked at the marine, particularly some of the previous plans, there were some pretty aggressive marinas that were displayed. I don't think this plan would limit that. I think what it's saying is you have a, you've built a new marina, it has some validity to it, there's opportunities to expand that. We're talking more from the land-based piece because the marina park could grow and, and ironically, the day we were at the park for the event, the concert, there's probably a dozen people that showed up by their boat, parked their boat, walked up, enjoyed the music. So it's already happening. I think that's just more what will hap, if you continue to see that opportunity, then you'd really be up to, you know, the city to decide how much you want to expand that.
And I think some of the alternatives also show kind of, you know, room for that expansion, whether it's maybe making it easier for non-motorized boats to, to, you know, that was some of the, we had a lot of folks who came in and said, you know, hey, the docks are, you know, they're great for the motorized, but it's kind of difficult to get in and out with, you know, and there's a great opportunity there where you got the Clear Lake Scullers already with their facility there. That might be an opportunity to kind of grab that and make more of a pedestrian access point right there. Additionally, the seaplanes are another great aspect we've been looking at, different areas of coming up with some specialized dock systems that work better for them so that, you know, you can, you can come in, maybe not just one day a year, but have some room where those seaplanes can be more a fixture of our downtown area as well.
And then maybe some of the resort, there's a resort that's built that wants to add a marina to their, to their project, and that could be a space to, to allow in the future.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome, much.
Anyone from the public?
Nancy Rosika, I was happy to hear Margaret say that this environmental would be project-driven. It bothers me to see an 80-unit, I seen back there next to a hotel alternatives, an 80-unit hotel on the Dutch Harbor property, when I heard people distinctly say, no hotel there, we don't want that to go to private ownership. We'd like to see that be public so we can preserve as much view as possible. I remember, you know, we're going through, trying to get courts here now, and people were very adamantly against maybe a courts facility going on that property. I think it would be great in spite of being in a flood zone because they could prop it up with parking underneath. It's like they do down in Texas and Florida, they're building places on stilts, so the water just flows underneath during a flood. But the most applause at the planning commission hearing was for Mr. Eppen Dedyu, who stressed the importance of putting a hotel project or a lodging project on the C Street Willoughby Point property. And I hate to see the city maybe competing for a project with the owner of that property. Something needs to be done about, and a lot of people feel badly that 20, 30 years ago, I don't remember how long it was, I've been here 42 years, but there was, a developer wanted to do a share tenere, and many people feel if we had that today, they haven't gotten over that, that that hasn't happened. I just was trying to book an event in the Pleasant Hill Wallon Creek area. The city of Pleasant Hill has done a community center. It is booked until November of 2018. It has a room that will accommodate 300 people in the middle of their park. It's absolutely gorgeous. It was available on one Friday night next August. And they charge as much as private industry charged for it, and they have full-time manager of their event facilities. They offer event venues in all their parks, and it appears they're really making money off of it. So what I hear in the community is no hotel on the Dutch Harbor. I just wanted to, to mention that, and I heard that at the hearing, so I don't know why it's still up there on the board. Thank you.
Melissa Fulton, and this is definitely an exciting town for Lakeport and Lake County. Everything that Lakeport is doing is going to benefit everyone, no matter where they live in the county. I, of course, it's no secret that I'm advocating for both the Dutch Harbor and the natural, natural high property to remain open space. We've talked, as we had the meetings, we've talked about possibly putting an amphitheater, I sort of remember that toward the Dutch Harbor property, but also having room for seaplane, permanent seaplane ramp to come up onshore. Not a whole lot of spaces, but certainly it would be a multiple-use area. And when you talk to the seaplane pilots that were here this, this week, many of them have been coming here for 30 years or more, and they are so much in favor of, and even have told us that they would be willing to invest their personal funds to assist in getting a permanent seaplane ramp to accommodate them so they could come any time of the year. And they're very serious about that. So that's something that I'm very glad to see that it's still in the talking stage and still open for discussion. Certainly, a promenade would enhance all of our experience as we visit downtown Lakeport and waterfront. We also know, most of us in this room, that Willoughby Point now has a new owner as of several months ago, and that owner is, has indicated, at least to me personally, and I believe to several city representatives, that he's more than willing to talk about and discuss putting a hotel on that property. And that certainly would be the highest and best use of that property, and it would certainly make a lot of people very happy. It would also, I think, encourage some of our current lodging facility owners to improve their properties and, and participate in the promenade access all the way to Clear Lake Avenue. So, a marina, I come from Southern California, although that was several years ago, I was a boater in the Long Beach area all the way down to San Diego, and we know that we have tremendous storms that, and we're currently experiencing yet again, a need to repair the seawall here in Lakeport, but, excuse me, the waterfront seawall. But seawalls can enhance the marina experience, and it would not be, I don't think it would be out of the realm of possibility to do an offshore seawall to protect any marina that we put in. Certainly, the technology is there, and it would protect all of our slits that we might put in from the tremendous storms. So there's a lot of discussion. This is such an exciting plan, and I think that, I applaud the city of Lakeport for all you're doing to put this plan together, to put the hotel feasibility study together, and really give people in Lakeport and the rest of Lake County hope that we are moving forward and we're soon going to have facilities that we haven't had in the past. So, thank you very much. And I, I know I can speak on behalf of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce that we're willing to partner and help and do whatever is necessary. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Melissa. Kevin, the way this plan is drawn out, it leaves some flexibility and some options for those locations. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, that was one of the fundamental pieces that we brought here. I mean, it became even more apparent after going through the, the different options and some of them hanging up over there as well.
So depending where a hotel wanted to go or develop?
Correct. And that, that was kind of the idea. We don't want to be competing against any private owner there, but I mean, there is some, you know, in that we own that site, you know, there's some leverageability that the city has. It became very clear during all the public outreach that the natural high property is a very valuable aesthetic property to, to the community. It's really the only spot on Main Street that you can see the lake. However, I mean, I don't think that folks are completely happy with its current condition. And so that's where you see a lot of those, a lot of these options and stuff include kind of improving some passive recreational area, but also incorporating some sort of commercial on it, because that's really the centerpiece of, you know, kind of the place-making, but really focusing on maintaining, you know, the view corridors and, and piecing it all together, making it more of a centerpiece. So yes, but very flexible.
And it was a really big discussion, and, and many, many people in favor of some type of lodging using Dutch Harbor and coming over a little bit maybe, but keeping the main part open. But incorporating a community meeting center was really important for the community. So, that was one of the, one of the number one things that were brought up with the promenade also, was some type of lodging with, with a community facility, yes.
Convention center, community center. Maybe we could have a reunion up here.
Because we don't have any place for receptions and things like that in, on our lakefront, so.
Yeah, and that was, you know, the, the plan kind of shows three separate areas for a potential hotel, and I think that was, you know, granted, it'd be fantastic if we had three hotels all competing for all those sites, but in all, in all likelihood, I mean, but it was very important that the plan not just focus and say, oh, this is the only site that's, that's appropriate for a hotel. We want, you know, someone coming in to be able to, to look and see. And if the hotel goes on one site, this plan also has, you know, some alternative uses for some of those other sites that may have been identified as a hotel. I think recognizing that a great spot for hotel would be that, that block there on Main Street between, you know, going around Fifth, but it's going to be a very difficult spot to fill because you have existing buildings and businesses there, but it would make a natural extension of the downtown area.
You have to simulate about three properties together to make that happen, so it's...
And Dutch, Dutch Harbor's not the most ideal because it's not that large, and it is further removed from downtown, but on the positive side, it's a city-owned property. So, I mean, it makes it that much simpler. But I would agree with Nancy, I think, you know, looking at Willoughby Point C Street as well, very favorable areas for, for further resort development.
One of the elements that maybe a lot of the people that were looking at this as some glorious glamorous wonderful revitalization plan may not have been thinking about is the fact that with the closure of Canofe Harbor Inn, and those of us that are in the larger organizations like Rotary and various others, California League of Cities, they bring huge amounts of people to a convention center, and those of us that have tried to find areas to have conventions, north of Santa Rosa, there is almost nothing that will accommodate more than 200 peoples anywhere north. And once you leave Santa Rosa, and there's not all that many great places in Santa Rosa that aren't exorbitantly expensive, something like a convention center type with a hotel would be a great thing to integrate into that on a beautiful spot. And those of us all attended the California League, the restaurants were overflowing, I mean, of course, it was 1,800 people there, but nevertheless, if we had 300 or 400 people flooding into a convention center, it would do great things for us. So it's something that we definitely need to leave on the table because it's just not anywhere available with the absence of Canofe Harbor Inn, and people are scrambling, and they're actually leaving, Rotary, I know for a fact, has been having, our district goes all the way to Arcada and down to Petaluma, they leave the state oftentimes to go find a dual convention for 500 people, because there's just not very many areas that aren't booked, like Nancy said. So that would be a great thing to have, whether it was 200, 300 at least, but I think Fortuna River Lodge, which has no facilities whatsoever, is often used because it's one of the few places that's big enough. So, it's a good thing to have on, on the...
And that, that ties in exactly with what we heard from the wine industry as well. I think I've said it at several of these occasions, but it's, they've told us to kind of master that art of getting people up here for the day, but to get them to stay overnight is going to require some better accommodations and more, more eating establishments and other things to sort of complement those things. And so that was, you know, looking at that, that component. And we have the waterfront. I mean, that's, that's something we've got to elaborate, so I mean, I think those are all in there.
Kevin, what were the three properties that were added to the boundary?
If you, if you look at your page 53, and I don't know if we can pull that map up again, it's, it's specifically in regards to the special commercial development zone, which kind of starts at Fifth Street, but it originally just ended with that one block. But the planning commission, and I think rightly so, recognized it as an opportunity given, you know, the new news on Bank of America pulling out of that area, that's stretching that district to include the Bank of America building and then just going up to connect with the, with the natural high site. All the recommendations that were already in the plan fit those, those two properties as well, so that was a recommendation that the planning commission made.
What, what color is that on?
It's the light blue.
Oh, okay.
And your, your document shows it already included, yeah.
So it used to be, just for frame of reference, it used to just come here.
Yeah.
And then it was, and ironically, it's almost the same sheet if you think about flipping it.
Any other questions?
Madam, if there's no further comment or questions, I move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the Lakeport, Lakeport revitalization plan.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. Next. We have some solar options. Is this Kevin's?
Yeah, you're stuck with me again. So, good evening, Councilmen, once again. I'll make my presentation here brief. I'm certainly not as much an expert on solar as I am on some of the land you've just turned over. But before I turn it over to both OpTerra Energy Systems who have been working with us, they brought their team here as well, and also NHA advisors, our financial services team are also here to kind of talk us through some of these. If your council recalls, back in, in March of 2016, staff presented kind of three financing options for a dual facility at the city's wastewater treatment facility plant off of Winda Lake. One array would directly serve the wastewater treatment facility, and then the second array would capture some of the energy uses from other off-site facilities at the city hall, water tanks, the corporation yard, and all such. In moving forward with the council's direction, staff soon discovered that legislative and regulatory... So, it kind of made us take another step backwards. But in doing so, we reached out to several neighboring cities and kind of saw how did you move forward with the successful solar plan? And we got in touch, both myself and Paul Brenn had a great meeting with the Public Works Director up in Yuba City, who's had a lot of success in there, and they got us in touch with Grass Valley and a couple other folks. And the common link between all of those was working with Optera Energy Systems. So, we reached out with them, and then in June of this year, we began working directly with Optera. They did an energy audit, a free energy audit, and then also came out and did a site visit and looked at all of our example facilities to kind of come up with a preliminary plan that they'll share with you tonight. Following the presentation, if your council would like to continue to sort of move forward in this direction, staff requests that you move to authorize the city manager to negotiate a program development agreement with Optera to create an investment-grade audit. The cost of that project would be $35,000. However, it's only paid if it's demonstrated that the project is financially feasible or isn't, and we decide not to move forward with it. If we do decide to move forward with it, it would be wrapped up into the entire investment package. If it's determined that this is not a financially feasible project, we would not go with $35,000. So, to clarify, the only way we would be paying $35,000 out of pocket is if it was demonstrated to be financially feasible, but we decided not to move forward with that project to be made. So, that kind of ends my expertise in this, so I'm going to bring Ashu Jain from Optera, and his team is here too. And then, like I said, NHA Advisors is also here to answer some questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jain. That would be destroyed everything. Sorry, good sir.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you again also. So, Ashu Jain at Optera Energy Services, and I'll take you through this presentation. I think I know the presentation by heart, so maybe I won't have to stand there. But I'll... Okay. So... Yeah. Is he up there? Is he on the chair? Right? I think I got the back here. I have the back here. I have the back here. Yeah. Yeah. It's pretty much once again. So, you know, like Mr. Jain mentioned, for the last three months, you've been working with staff and putting this feasibility study together, and we'll take you through that, but I just want to take maybe two to three minutes to talk about us, who we are. It's, Optera Energy is, you know, probably not a very familiar name to most people here. So, we've actually been in business for over 40 years. We were part of Chevron though, a year ago, a year and a half ago. And before that, we were part of PG&E Services, and now owned by a company called NG, which is actually the largest facility in Europe and also the largest electricity producer in the world. So, and the reason I just want to point that out is, we offer long-term guarantees. We guarantee all our work for, you know, for 20 years. And so, you want to make sure that they're a financially stable company that's backing us, which is true in this case. We do have a lot of resources in our company. We have over 150 professionals in California, and we have offices in eight locations in California. I would think closest one is Sacramento. I don't know, corporate offices in Oakland. These are some of the cities we've done work in, and Yuba City, of course, Grass Valley, and I'll take you through some of these projects. So, Yuba City, just because Mr. Jain pointed that out, and, you know, we've done several, actually, we did a project which was to replace LED lighting in all the city facilities. We did a solar project for their aquatic park. We did solar hot water heating for the swimming pool. We did some, we improved the air conditioning at the city hall, and we did a solar project at their water treatment plant. And I might have some pictures. That's a solar, that's a ground mount solar project at the water treatment plant. That's the solar hot water heating panels, if you see in the background there. And we did, like I mentioned, HVAC and LED lighting and some other things. We're currently in construction right now. We're doing a second phase. We're doing a 2-megawatt, which is, you know, occupies probably around 10 acres of land, a ground mount system at the wastewater treatment facility. And we're also doing a battery storage project at the water treatment facility. And battery storage is just like a Tesla car battery, except you apply it to buildings. So, it's actually, we do work with Tesla too. So, you take, you charge the batteries at night, and they're fast to power as well, and you use them up during the daytime. That's where the advantage comes, using batteries. Any questions at any time, please. So, similar project, city of Grass Valley, again, pretty successful. On Southern County, we did a $10 million project, solar energy efficiency. Yuba County, they've done several projects. We just completed a project at the airport, you know, one and a half mile or. So, with that, I'm going to jump into this local work that we are recommending for your project, for your city.
I think we're okay.
I'm okay if you were, you know, we had, we did pass on the simple copies, and so we do that. So, yeah, thank you. So, you know, we are recommending lighting in a lot of, LED lighting in a couple of buildings, solar in a lot of your facilities, and, you know, HVAC and then some, in just one building, it's a small apartment unit at the library here, and the street lighting, you know, the street lights that have not been retrofitted to LED. So, you know, we retrofit the indoor and outdoor lighting in these four buildings, and the great thing about LED lighting, you probably know, is that it's very long-lasting. It lasts almost 20 to 30 years, and, you know, it consumes half of what the lights are consuming, and it's actually better quality lighting. There are certain streetlights that are not retrofitted to LED. I think some of them are, but around the park, and, you know, there are some, I don't exactly know what we were, I know, our engineers do. So, there were 62 lights that are still remaining to be converted to LED. I think the rest probably owned by PG&E, and they've been converted, or they've been converted by...
They're in process, hopefully, in the next month or so.
Okay. There was, there's one unit at the Carnegie Library that needed to be replaced, so we're going to do that. So, let's, most of this project is actually a solar project, over 90% of it is a solar project. And so, we looked at, we looked at your entire building history for the last couple of years. We looked at all the meters. We walked most of it, we walked all your sites, but we potentially installed solar projects. And so, at this facility, which is your wastewater treatment plant, you know, three meters there, we're going to combine those three meters and install one solar project, which will be connected to one of the meters, but it can virtually avoid electricity use at the other meters here. So, these are what's called net meter, which means you're buying, you're selling and buying electricity every 15 minutes to PG&E. So, if you're not using the electricity at site, you sell it to PG&E at the same rate that you, that's applicable during that 15 minutes. So, there's a meter that tabulates it every 15 minutes, and you got the same meters right now at your facility, so that's nothing unique. So, you know, so in the summertime, and especially in the wastewater treatment plant, you know, energy use is more towards the evening, morning, and the solar project is actually increasing during afternoon and evening when the cost of electricity is the highest. So, you're actually consuming electricity at the wastewater treatment plant, and if the cost is low, the solar actually projects, selling the electricity back to PG&E when the cost is high. So, that's why this project is very attractive. Again, this is the cooperation yard. You know, we have, these are shade structures, they're roughly around, our standard clear height is 10 feet, but I think these might be higher to accommodate all the vehicles there. So, this will be not only for the cooperation yard, but also for, there are some pumps there, and I think it's a water treatment plant.
Yeah, for the auto connection.
Yeah. So, it will be, it'll avoid the cost for all of those meters. The Green Branch Waterwell, this is just sized for that one, that one well there. So, it's relatively small, it's 201 kilowatts. So, I'll just avoid the, essentially, the complete electricity use of that well. City Hall, we just have a smaller rate. It's right, I don't know, just a good size with it. That's us.
Yes, behind.
I'm really challenged when it comes to all the infrastructure, so, yeah, this, it will be, you know, 29, 29 kilowatts, so you can see the size. And it'll be nice, it will provide some shade for vehicles there, and we also have, we'll have a electric car charger, and we need that. The new PD, this is, of course, sort of schematic, because, you know, I think the plan is still being finalized for this space, and, you know, I think this is going to be, what is the word I'm looking for, the secure parking, I guess?
Right.
Okay. So, so we'll plan to install a solar panel over there. Like I mentioned, we'll do a car charging, a dual-port car charging station at City Hall. And of course, everything that I've said here is preliminary, this is the feasibility study. You know, as Mr. Jain mentioned, if you decide, if the council decides to move to the next step, then we'll finalize all these details and exactly finalize the size of the systems. So, you know, we run contractors who give you a guaranteed price, guaranteed savings. So, this is pretty preliminary, but in our experience, it's around within 10 to 20 acres, I would say. So, I think it's, of course, a pretty involved cash flow here. So, preliminarily, our budget estimate for all of this is around $3.9 million for everything that I mentioned. And we made certain assumptions that electricity costs will be rising at 5% per year, and our O&amp;M costs, our operation and maintenance costs will be rising at 3%. And we are not fair to back those numbers up. So, the electricity savings is around $266,000, which is roughly, I would say, 75% of what you're consuming, what you're spending. So, it's around, you're spending around, I would say, around $330 at the, for the entire city, all the buildings. And so, we're avoiding roughly around 75% of that through these projects. So, first year, you'll save $266,000. There's some operational maintenance savings that saves in launch and balance. Minor incentives available for LED lighting, so that's the total program savings. We guarantee the savings, and so there's some measurement and verification that we do annually. We completely maintain all the solar projects, your staff doesn't have to do anything, we clean them. We do the electrical maintenance, so that's completely done by us. So, this, of course, doesn't include the cost of money, the cost, you know, this is as if you had $3.9 million cash, and you, so, and then those would be the savings. I'll leave it to Craig Hill to come and explain to you, you know, how financially this could work, you know, what the financial options are. For this project, we're estimating, you know, around $245,000 in savings in the first year, and then that, of course, keeps on increasing as the cost of electricity keeps on increasing. So, that's the cash flow. I know I ran to it, and it could be a little hard to grasp, but I'll be happy to take any questions if anyone has about that. And again, this is all very preliminary, but we'll come back and give you our numbers next time. So, just to summarize the benefits, you know, this project will create $15 million in savings, not accounting for lease payments. And so, new city electricity is going to over 50%, and I know I said 75% earlier, that 75% is in the facilities that we are including, so there are facilities that we're not doing anything. That's why it's 50% overall for the city. I might have misspoken a little bit earlier. So, it's 75% of what has been, the buildings that we are looking at, we're avoiding 75% of the electricity use of those buildings, but there are buildings that are not included in streetlights, so that is not included. That's why the overall is 50%. Right shade for the cars, we guarantee 95% of the savings that we've outlined here, and when we say guarantee, it's a hard guarantee, every year we'll do an accounting, and if we don't save as much as we're going to, we'll write you a check. So, that's a pretty hard guarantee. Those are the main benefits. We try to do, as, you know, we really try to reach out to the local Chamber of Commerce, local contractor community, to see if there's any work that local, you know, contractors can do. We do all the engineering in-house, we do all the project management, we do all the procurement in-house. But we actually have local, we have subcontractors install local, so, you know, we do a pretty good job of reaching out to the local community to see if they can participate. There's a legislation in California Government Board 4217, which allows the cities to negotiate these projects with us, and so it allows us to, you know, work with any contractor as long as, you know, they meet our due qualifications requirements. I think the last slide I have is just a sort of a timeline. We've done opportunity assessment of the feasibility study. If the council approves, the program development agreement today, it'll, because the holidays and everything, it'll take us, we should be back here in January with our final proposal after taking it to staff. And if, you know, if the staff and the council decides to approve that, it'll take us only a year to prove, complete the project, and that's on the highest side, which we'll be able to do it. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I was wondering, I like the ideas about the replacement of the outside by the outdoor lighting, and I was wondering if you're familiar, or if in any of your other projects previously, you have taken into consideration replacement of this lighting while thinking about how it would affect the evening skies?
So, with LED lights, you know, they're much more focused. So, when you talk about night sky and all that effect, LED is actually ideally meant for that, so you can focus that much more than, you can do, what you have right now is like a metal daylight, and that's very widespread. So, it's actually much more conducive to that, the outdoor lighting. Yeah, and so, and we had questions on park, you know, parks sometimes can be over there. So, with even the LED lighting, so it's, we do a good job, and we haven't included any park lighting here, but that is something that we, you know, we definitely, we like to, you know, make sure that it's not overlaid, and we, we're very interested in our community in, for our solar projects, our lighting projects. We're just, you know, we just last week did an invasion of a park lighting for a community in Sacramento, so we'll definitely look into all that before we bring the recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
One of the things I saw at the conference recently was LED streetlights that were adjustable. A guy would like step on a switch, and it would knock it down, and so...
Yeah, so the outdoor lighting, we re-proposed. in Sacramento, so we'll definitely look into all that before we bring the accommodation to the council.
Thank you.
One of the things I saw at the conference recently was LED streetlights that were adjustable. A guy would like step on a switch and it would knock it down and so.
Yeah, so the outdoor lighting, LED proposed, it's dual lighting. So as you get closer, it'll go to full, full lighting. Otherwise, it's adjustable, you can bring it, it's just motion sensor, so it can come down, it'll come down to like 30%.
And that's already integrated into the.
Right.
Any other questions? Do we need to figure out how to pay for it?
I'm gonna let Mr. Ingram answer that.
Well, I'll turn that over. I'll try my best to talk to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to give credit to Craig, because he was the one that we were talking about trying to figure out, but how are we gonna finance? He said, he really needs to talk to you, the city, city manager. So we had a conference call and pretty soon found out that many communities were very happy with the way this program worked.
That's how we got to know.
Yeah. And so Craig was the catalyst on that, so.
Oh, go Craig.
Yeah. I will, I will say, we have had a lot of good success working with Optera and some other projects. I'm gonna act as, I know how to do that.
It's the upper.
I'm not gonna razzle-dazzle you with any fancy slides here tonight, but just real quickly, I think from a policy perspective, what I'd like you all to be thinking about is, Ashu just went through what the preliminary assessment is showing. You know, he's, he's demonstrated in this pro forma, there's, that there's roughly 15 million dollars in savings over the course of 30 years that could come from this project. And you have to pay for the project. So we've gotta come up with, call it 4 million dollars, let's just round the number out, make it easy. If you had cash, right, you'd put 4 million towards it, that would mean you'd save 11 million going forward, right? Simple, no interest, no nothing. So I think the way that you should be thinking about this, we have a lot of communities where, you know, the council policy and direction is, you know, we wanna do good. We wanna, we wanna implement projects that are, you know, environmentally aware and are going to save the earth, right? So we work for the city of Berkeley, and that's, even if it lost money, they'd wanna do it, right? So it's, you're like, okay, well, we're gonna move forward on this project, even if it doesn't pencil. Then you have other communities which are much more fiscally conservative and will say, I need to see that this thing makes money. I wanna see that it makes a lot of money. Otherwise, we're not gonna do it. So you can think about a return on investment for any facility that you buy. And then you have everybody else who might be somewhere in the middle. So I ask for you to think about whether you move forward on this project, on whether or not there is some kind of a baseline savings threshold that you wanna see. You know, do we want it to be, I think staff would probably recommend that this thing at least be positive, you know, a dollar, 50,000, 100 a year, because.
I would guess that we're one of those more conservative cities.
So it's, you know, generally the way these work, and Ashu went through and represented that the savings goes up every year as your, as your energy costs are offset, right? So energy is a lot more expensive in 30 years presumably than it is today. So your biggest bang for your buck's gonna be in year 30. But you do still need to, you know, your budget issues are right now, right? Year one through year 10, we're gonna be thinking about. So how much do we want to see this opportunity economically benefit the city, right? Do we wanna create a minimum threshold? And if that is the case, then we, working with staff, would try to figure out what the best financing structure would be to pay for this project. I'm only saying that because assuming you do wanna move forward, we have a couple of different options that we need to look at to bring back to you as probably part of the whole plan. Ashu was talking about doing this feasibility, really, we won't be talking about financing until either the end of the year or in January, so we've got some time. And you have time to be thinking about it and asking more questions in terms of where you really wanna go with this. I, I would just like to clarify one thing. Kevin mentioned that my partner was here a year and a half ago or so, we were talking about these projects. The proposable for you today is now for the city to own the projects. You may remember the conversation earlier was, well, what if we just let somebody else own it, build it, finance it, and we'll just pay them? And we'll, you know, we'll make money because we're gonna pay less to PG&E. Here, you're actually going to be the proud parents of a number of, you know, nice improvements with Optera theoretically maintaining it for you, but you are going to own it. And that also means that you are going to have to pay for it or buy it. And so that's the 4 million dollars that we're talking about today. So you, through this process over a year and a half, you have definitely been going into a direction that now says, no, we wanna have the best opportunity, the best projects we can, and we understand that we're going to buy it. This power purchase agreement concept that was introduced a year and a half ago is not on the table anymore, which I think is fine, for all the reasons that the staff report laid out. But I did wanna just make sure that everybody was clear on that. So with that, I can answer any questions or?
Well, yeah.
So basically, after we pay the, let's say, 4 million dollars, we own all the panels and all the equipment.
You're actually gonna own it from day one.
Okay.
Once they're done with it.
So, but that, now that we own it, what will the maintenance be after, I mean, they're not gonna give us maintenance for the rest of our lives, are they?
20 years?
Yeah, we'll.
We'll write a contract for 20 years. For 20 years?
Yeah.
And is that the?
That's the cost right there.
Is that would be, that would be part of the 4 million that you're putting into?
It's not, but it's part of the solar maintenance cost on their pro forma on that page on slide 26. It says solar maintenance cost, that should be a cost for maintenance. And that's why whether, you know, we're maintaining it or not, you're gonna be having that kind of cost. You should be building the cost into your pro forma for somebody to maintain it. But we will write a maintenance contract for 20 years, and we have for a lot of people. And so we are maintaining all the projects that I mentioned for, for Grasshaw, Ugo City, Sota County, Ugo County. All these projects are maintained by our own people. We have our own trucks. And you don't clean them, we're cleaning the subcontractor, all the electrical maintenance we do in-house. But it's all included in that price.
So you think about it like a regular contract project that you're building, right? They're, they're gonna come in, they're going to build it, they're gonna hand you the keys on day zero. They're going to then guarantee that the system will perform for 20 years. And then the only thing that you will do is enter into a long-term relationship to pay them roughly 20,000 a year, as Ashu just went through, to maintain and make sure that it's all working appropriately. That's the, the kind of ongoing warranty, so to speak, that you'd be buying. Now, in addition to that, we need to finance this, right? We need to come up with the 4 million. So the 4 million is gonna have its own loan repayment mechanism that will eat into what is estimated to be a quarter of a million a year in savings. You know, my, I started this conversation.
That's what I would love to know. Like, what are some of the options? So what do, what do we have, like a 30,000 a month PG&E bill? Is that a month, or is that?
It's like 300 something a year. Would you say 300?
350,000.
350 was just the buildings that, so that doesn't include the, include the lighting.
So you're probably paying 30 to 40 thousand.
I think it's.
So, yeah, you know, Councilmember Brunkfeld used to read it off every meeting. I just wasn't sure if that was twice a month or once. Isn't it around 30, 35,000?
Well, the sewer plant itself, the 3 meter of the sewer plant are about 50,000 dollars a month.
Okay. And the 30,000 is just City Hall?
And lights.
And light.
Um, yeah.
Okay. So then, so that's 80,000. And then, so what are we gonna pay each month to borrow 4 million?
Right. So, so the way we went back into it, and we think about it as though this is your income, right? This is your salary, and you wanna get a mortgage on your house. And you say, well, if I got 250,000 a year, a year to pay for, if you wanted to buy that in the month, so it'll slow me down a little bit. You know, do we want to have our mortgage be 200,000 so that we, you know, we make 50,000 or we save 50,000 here? Or, or do we say, well, no, let's, if we know we're gonna make 250,000, let's use that all to pay back the loan so that we can get rid of this loan sooner rather than later? Again, there's not a right answer or a wrong answer here. It's kind of a, a policy on, let's get rid of the debt as soon as possible, or, you know, let's actually take advantage of this opportunity and kind of have cash flow benefits coming at it for the next 20 to 30 years. So with, the loan term, right, it's like a 15-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage, would be a lot higher on the 15 than it would be on a 30. But we would never wanna be higher, well, I know market would kill higher than it is higher. So we'll never have a payment that would be higher than that for our right column, right? And most likely, it would be 75% of that right column, or 50%.
Yeah, so at least, that's something we can talk about, how we wanna structure that later on. But it depends, you know, if we need a little bit more.
Well, it seems to me that, that you would be able to be presented with a number of different scenarios so that you could, you know, you could say, well, we, we'll have 50,000, we'll have 60,000. If we do a 10-year, 15, 20-year with a fixed rate, that type of thing, it would be the same thing, like you said, with a 15-year mortgage, and you're gonna pay it off quicker. And then, at the end of 15 years, and the five years is pure, you know, gravy. And so if we do it in 10, it'll be gravy longer, and you have to figure out how much your O and M and all that stuff is, and then figure out if you already paid it off, you're getting more benefit in 10 years. We'll be gone, so we won't get the credit. So maybe we wanna put it on a long term, take the money and do other things. So those are all the things we'll discuss once we get.
Probably like in January, like.
But the good news is, we know that we're gonna save basically about 50% overall. It's something that we've had on our, on our plate for a long time, something that some of us have been very passionate about. And this goes way beyond what our first wilder streams were initially, because this carries over into the lighting and all the other things HVC and all the other great things. And then we have a company with 150,000 people in the United States, and all these huge projects, and they've got a track record of at least 22 people I can see here in the folder, and we know we're gonna make money. So going forward is not the problem. The financing thing we'll deal with later, once we get all the final audit, the quality audit, with no 10 and 50% slot, and it'll be like accurate, right?
Right. So we would typically, what we would, the process that we would do is, we would typically come back, as we know that Optera is closer to their final project estimates and their pro forma. And then we would probably bring three or four different scenarios to you and say, this scenario saves you X dollars a year, this scenario saves you Y. And then between those, you would pick. We would then need to come back with the actual documentation that you would prove. So it's kind of like the other agenda item you have tonight, is, let's talk about it, ask any questions. If you say yes, then we go back, have the lawyers do all the work and bring back the documentation. So you, you would expect to see us at least twice, you know, once potentially in January, probably again in February or March.
So tonight, it's, it's the big question, do you wanna spend 35,000 dollars to move forward on this? Is the main question for tonight?
Well, and it's important to recognize that in the end, we are gonna be borrowing 4 million dollars to follow through with the plan. So I, I mean, to me, it goes hand in hand, and we are making a decision now that it's important that we're doing something green, but we also probably wanna save some money every month. So, but 4 million dollars is a gigantic loan for our small city. So I'm just, when you're.
But the savings is.
Out there.
Is huge.
Well, and part of, the savings is gonna be a, a decision on our part, is do we wanna save every month, or are we just paying it off? So I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, the one thing about the, the decision that needs to be made tonight, and to me is relatively clear to me, that we, if we go forward with the 35,000, the only way that we pay the 35,000 is if we agree, or they, they show us that we're going to save money, and we're going to save all this money, and we say, we know what, that's great, we're not gonna do it. Then we pay the 35,000. If we don't, if it doesn't save us money, we don't have to pay the 35,000, as Kevin said. And if we go forward with the project, it's rolled into the cost of the project, and we don't have to front it out, it'll be part of the, I guess, the financing package.
It is included in the 3.9 million, 35,000.
Right. Yeah. So.
So I have a question. You said that this is based only on certain properties, certain locations. Is there a reason why not all of the city's properties are referenced in this?
I think there might be some really small facilities that we didn't include, but I think the rest that we have not shown are streetlights, so that, you know, those, those are, belong to PG&E, and we can't really do anything. So, so you are, you do have several streetlights that are owned by PG&E. You know, you have like an 8,000 dollar bill here, another 44,000 dollar bill. So, so we can't impact that, because we, you know, they're not owned by the city, we aren't allowed to touch them either. So we're impacting, I, I think, and I'll let Mr. Ingram talk about if there are any facility we left out, but I think we looked at them.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we're missing was just, I think though, the, there's a couple other wells on the Green Ranch that wouldn't be served by it. But, but all, but the major, all the large facilities, all our huge power users are covered.
Do you know what that 44,000 101?
It's probably a street light.
No, it has an average of 225 watts.
Yeah, we pay, we pay 50 to 60,000 dollars a year for streetlights.
From PG&E?
To PG&E.
And that should be cut in half now, but they're.
Right, they're gonna redo.
They're redoing it.
Yes, we're right in all the process of them coming in and replacing them all with LEDs.
The one thing that, that I was immediately was interested in questioning was, you have the Green Ranch up there, and you put just enough, 101, I think you said, was the amount that you put on there. And if, if the field is there, what would, I mean, is there no way to transfer or to gain any advantage?
There is a way to transfer it, but not economically.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because it seemed to me that, you know, when you go out in various areas, they have these solar fields that go on, you know, for days and.
We've done those projects, unfortunately, what's happened, you like, for, for, you were counting, you did a project at the airport, and that's actually to provide where their, their facilities don't have space. So that electricity from that one and a half megawatt project gets sold to PG&E essentially. PG&E gives them a credit for all the locations that don't have solar. That, unfortunately, that rate schedule is still available, but it's become really unattractive.
Scarcity.
No, it's not scarce, it's unattractive now. And so, so that's other reason, plus, plus other reason is, you need to have a very large bill to make something like that potentially viable. So, you know, we're doing a, minimum, we like to do seven, eight, 10 kilowatt size project, so that was impossible here.
Any other question? Anyone from the public? Come on up.
I know in my house that.
Oh, hang on, come up and let everyone know your name first.
My name's Kathy Spur. And in my house, I did not want LED lighting. And so I just pulled it up in Google Dev. And this may be old information, but it talks about nickel and, let's see, what does it say? That there is possibilities of cancer. There's, there's lots of different mineral or metals in it, heavy metals that cause allergic reactions, and as many as one in five of us upon exposure. Do you know anything about any of these things?
No, there was a, sorry, there was an article by AMA, American Medical Association, two or three years ago about street lighting and how it was so bright and the color temperature was so high that it was stark white and, you know, even that study was flawed. And so since that study, the industry has moved on to what's called more warmer colors. So it's, I wanna get technical, but it's now 3500 Kelvin and below. It used to be at 5,000 Kelvin, so higher temperature, more white the light was. But I have, seriously, I've never heard of it causing cancer or anything like that. And we are doing it, LED lighting is not something new, it's been around for decades, it's just that it's become economically viable, and we have LED lighting in hospitals and, I mean, we're, we stopped doing fluorescent lighting five years ago, but only doing LED lighting now. So we're happy to look into that more, and, but I've never looked at it.
Okay, this is article. Thank you. Did you have any other question?
Yes, it talks about, in cars that have the LED lighting, that people who are taking up the wreckage need to have safety protection gloves and material on them so they won't be exposed.
I'll look that up. Thank you.
Okay, it's just something that I want to bring up about us. It's also toxic to aquatic.
Can you come up to the microphone?
It's toxic to aquatic, aquatic animals, our fish and things like that, if it gets into the.
Okay.
Into the light.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're talking about what's inside the light bulb, not necessarily the light, right?
What's inside the light bulb? The metals that are inside the light bulb.
Anyone else? Yep.
I might be able to remedy this situation. When she's.
Hang on, hang on, come on up to my microphone. Do you wanna use that microphone?
Do you have one there?
Oh, okay. Cool.
Oh, okay, cool, all right.
What was your name again?
My name is Andrea Anderson. And I think what she's speaking of is that when a light bulb breaks, like in an accident, or like at home, when you have one that breaks, you do have to, there's certain things, certain elements you're not really supposed to touch. And you do need special handling or what have you of it, you know? Just like when you break a thermometer, okay? You can't just pick it up with the hands and, you know? But I think generally, as long as it's not broken, like Tim said, what's, the dangerous part is not the emission of it, it's what's inside. If it breaks, if it gets everywhere, that could be a public hazard. But, you know, that's kind of with any LED light bulb, even in your house or in a store, what have you.
Thank you.
I mean, if that sheds light on the subject.
Sure.
She's lighting on her.
Anyone else? Okay, bring you back to council.
Well, previously, in the last couple sessions where we had annual planning and things like that, I've always been a huge advocate of a solar array that was not funded through any other source except the city buying it. I think this is the best way to go. That's where you optimize your gains and the long-term benefits are incredible. And these things last 20 to 30 years, so it'll be paid for. And we'll be getting the benefits long beyond what the payment schedule is. And I think the payment schedule is something that regardless of what we do here tonight, we can work those details out. And we can discuss those, hash them out, look at our short-term needs for financing and stuff that we might need if we want to go lower and take it longer. But I think that can be dealt with later. But I think this is a huge, beautiful project for the City of Lake Board with the shade structures and all the great things, the charging stations. It puts us finally out in front of the rural communities that kind of like lay back and do the wait-and-see kind of thing. I think we need to move on this. I personally think this is one of the best things that the city can do right at this time, at this moment, rather than this wait-and-see or late-a-doctor thing. I think we need to get busy with that. My humble opinion.
One thing that I would like to see, once, if we go forward with it and all this and we get 20 years' worth of maintenance and stuff, I would like to see some of our workers, you know, kind of like get involved with the maintenance during this 20-year period, of course, I'm not going to be here 20 years from now, so that, you know, they know the ins and outs and how to fix it and stuff in case we don't go back with a more maintenance contract. But we'd have some, somebody, the city has that.
Doug wants to learn.
Not knowledgeable in this.
Thank you, Doug, you're always there for us.
I'll gladly take on that task.
That is one question, would, would your team train one of our people in like an emergency situation, if these lights blow out, how to properly clean it up, how to take care of it?
Or the lights, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And even for the solar project, I want to make it very clear, we offer maintenance, because that's what our customers want. It's not a profit center for us, we would gladly give them maintenance.
Back with what Tim was saying, I mean, you guys are.
No, we will definitely.
You guys are in Sacramento, and we have a big problem. Do we have something local?
So the problem with the solar project is, it's not, you know, light threatening or something, you know? The solar project, the most thing that happens is, you know, an inverter goes off. And we monitor every one of our solar projects out of our office in Overland Park, and it's 24/7. And if something goes off, we actually come to know and give alert to the city. But, you know, really, I mean, it's, we're guaranteeing the savings. We'll be here as quickly as we can to fix that. So, but as far as training our people, even from day one, if you want to take over like cleaning, you're welcome to do that. Electrical maintenance, we can train them. And I'm telling you, we are interested in doing the construction. After that, we're doing the maintenance, because if you don't offer it, the cities don't have people who can do it. So we'll be happy to do it from six months on, you can take over the maintenance.
Wow, I'm just, you know.
No, I'm saying that's an option.
I would assume then, if something went wrong, like an inverter or whatever, we'd be just not giving PG&E power, and we'd be just sucking PG&E power into our plant, so we'd still be running.
Well, we're still making it work though. We are making it work if an inverter goes out. So the power that you're buying from PG&E will be ten years for that.
Okay.
Yeah, the difference in cost, yeah. And, yeah, so, and the inverters will come with a 20-year warranty, the panels have 25-year warranty. So, so, you know, that's the bulk of it.
Any other discussion?
If there's no further discussion, the public, and who did you already look that up?
We did.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I've moved to authorize City Manager to negotiate and execute a program development agreement with Optera Energy Services for an amount not to exceed $35,000. Subject to legal review.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone, for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks, everyone.
All right, next, we're going to talk about refinancing the city's outstanding 2007 A wastewater revenue bond. Nick?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you, is there a resolution for your consideration to direct staff to initiate the process of issuing wastewater revenue refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of approximately $3 million? The current CSDA wastewater revenue bonds issued in 2008 are outstanding in the amounts of approximately 2.5 million, with total combined debt service of approximately $4 million. And the current interest rates on those bonds are between 4% and 4.75%, scheduled to mature in 2038. These bonds are callable on October 1st, 2018, which is coming up next year. There's deposit, there's an option of a refund closing in October of 2017. It's an advance refunding, placing, placing the proceeds from the refinancing bonds in the escrow account, which would pay off the old bonds upon maturity. The current market interest rates are estimated to be approximately 2.25%, which we've taken advantage of most recently by refunding and restructuring some other pieces of debt. The city staff has been working with NHA to analyze and evaluate potential savings. The last project, like I mentioned, was to refinance the successor redevelopment agency debt. All the costs of issuance associated with the refunding are paid out of the proceeds of the new bond, and they were estimated to be about $100,000, I believe. And, and so staff has been working with NHA. And we've realized that the greatest savings that we could get from refunding this bond is by using the lower interest rates to essentially eliminate the ending portion of the debt and bring the maturity of the new bonds to a more recent date. And so the current bonds are scheduled to mature in 2038. We could essentially refinance under the lower interest rates and move that date to 2032 and keep the debt service essentially the same, which would eliminate the last four years of payment, which is approximately $400,000 in cash. $468,000 in cash, or 18.7%. Industry standards show that savings of 3% make the, make a project fiscally, fiscally sound. Staff would, upon adoption of the resolution, staff would continue to work with NHA and together to look at shortening the bonds even further, which would increase the annual debt service through the remaining term. But the, the more we shorten the debt, the more we save. We would just need to structure it with our capital improvement plan to ensure that we're not putting out too much cash, we won't be able to complete projects that are on the list, and strategically placing ourselves down the road to have that significant saving, increasing cash available for when capital projects are needed. And so the, the best case, I mean, we need to consider, consider all options. But reducing, reducing the debts would be maturing in 10 years, we would end up saving approximately $1 million instead of the $500,000. So we, we need to just continue, you know, upon adoption, we would bring that back. We'd bring back what we believe is the best possible scenario on cash flow and savings, and make the best decision.
Okay, so we're not deciding which financing term we're going with tonight, we're just deciding moving forward with refinancing.
Moving forward refinancing and appointing the team, including Bond Counsel, Financial Assistance and Securities, Hilltop Security.
Okay, great. Questions? Will you be working on this as well?
Yeah, and if I can, just have a clarifying comment.
I can't remember your name, sorry.
Craig Hill, NHA Advisors. And as Nick laid out, the terms, the one issue I want to make sure the council is clear on is this concept of an advanced refunding. So the call date, or the option to pay off the old debt, is a year from now, October of 2018. We could move forward now, put the money into an escrow fund, you know, and then it would actually pay off. You would no longer be legally responsible for it, but it would be paid off. The one condition that comes with that is what we call the one Biden, the apple. Unlike your mortgage, my prior scenario, where you can kind of refinance anytime you want, when you do an advanced refunding, the IRS and the federal government says you only get to do that once. So we wouldn't want to move forward on this, do an advanced refunding in the next two to three months, and then in two years, you say, you know what, let's refinance that again, rates are low, or we won't be able to do it. So this is kind of your one chance to look at it. And the recommendation right now is, let's, let's look at this under a couple different scenarios. Do we really accelerate the debt, shorten it, get much lower interest rates, and save a lot more interest? Or do we, like we were having this earlier conversation, do we really look at this as a cash flow thing? This particular project before you right now is completely opposite of the energy in terms of cash flow is not the issue, right? This is taking advantage of much lower interest rates.
But seriously, 2.25% interest rate, I mean, how much lower?
You know, in my world, it's the more we have uncertainty in the world, the lower the interest rates go. So the stock market might not be going the right way, but the bond market certainly.
But I could live with two and a quarter.
Especially on my home mortgage. Two and a quarter for 20 years wouldn't matter, 50.
And when we looked at accelerating that payment, that payoff, the payment wasn't even that much different for, to get the, almost the $800,000 savings instead of.
Because the interest is so low.
Yeah, it was, it was.
To keep the debt service payment essentially the same, we could eliminate the last four years of payments.
Yeah.
It's almost a half a million bucks. But only Tim would be alive to see that. There's only five.
I plan on it.
Sorry, that was my only clarifying, my only point, I make sure.
Any questions for Craig? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public? Okay, further discussion?
I would just like to compliment staff for continuously looking out there to save ratepayers, like in the sewer district, and doing this kind of stuff that you could be going around, business as usual, in the city manager's chair, and just doing your job. But you guys are actually going out there and finding things and finding ways to discover new, you know, assets that we can, you know, create by, you know, prepaying these things at a lower rate, which a lot of people, that wouldn't be in their daily job. And I think it's great that you bring these to us, because it's great to save $168,000. And I really appreciate the work that you guys do above and beyond your daily work to find stuff that's older and bring it to us so that we can save, you know, the City of Lake Board money that we can use for other purposes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not one take a motion?
Madam Mayor, I've moved to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager and finance director to work with the financing team to refinance the prior bonds by issuing wastewater revenue refunding bonds with a principal amount of approximately $3 million.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nick.
Welcome.
Next, we have professional service agreements for background investigative services. Kelly?
Here, a second.
Okay. See everybody.
Okay, save the best for last. This is pretty straightforward. The city utilizes background investigators as part of the pre-employment due diligence process. We've been, in the past years, using an outside investigator named Ed Bean. And Ed moved out of county and broke our hearts, because we really liked Ed. So to replace Ed, we needed to go and search out local background investigators. We sent out an RFP, RFQ document and had four, four good responses, qualified agencies. And Brad and I did a lot of questioning, we reviewed them very thoroughly. We're happy with all of them. The only downside to the four was that we couldn't pick just one, because they all have other business and they couldn't really guarantee the work. So we decided to contract with all four of them. And we've been utilizing all four of them, and we've been very happy with their services. So that, in order to contract with all four of them, on Margaret's, city manager's signature authority, they were just small contracts. So what we have before you now is contracts with these four that don't have a dollar amount limitation. They're five-year contracts, and the dollar amount would be, like many of our other contracts, would just be subject to the budget process or control of the dollar amount. So if you have any questions, happy to answer any questions.
So we're not paying them like a retainer fee or anything like that? We're just paying them like an hourly wage? How's that work with more people?
Yeah, they're all, they're all a little bit different, but yeah, basically, it's hourly.
Okay, so it doesn't matter which one we're, we go to one and he's busy, then we go to the second one, and then whoever gets not busy, then they get their hourly wage. But we're not paying them like a retainer fee for each.
We pay them as we use them, so.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Okay. There's no other discussion, we'll take a motion?
No.
Madam Mayor, I've moved to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the proposed professional services agreement with James Baumann, doing business at Pacific Quest Investigations, Harry R. Buckles, DBA, LACO Investigation, Klein Investigations LLC, and Bob.
Mishiyama.
Mishiyama Investigations. Thanks, dear.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kelly. City Council Communications. Kevin?
Nothing to report this evening.
Jake?
Yes, a few things. This Friday, the 22nd, is going to be the Clearlake High School Homecoming Parade. It'll start downtown in Nashville High, I believe, at 4:10 PM. And then also wanted to let the council know that on October 4th, we're working with the Lakeport Unified School District. We're going to be doing a Walk to School Day from the High Street Islander Shopping Center to the school district campuses. And we're going to start at 7:15 in the morning, and we'll end up doing two different trips with students there. So if anyone wishes to come out, they're welcome, and be there at 7:15 at the High Street Shopping Center. And then, once that gets over, that same day is actually National. And then, once that gets over, that same day is actually National Coffee with a Cop Day, so we're going to be holding one of those events from nine to 11:00 down at Susie Q's Donuts. So, we'll be busy that morning.
So, that's October 4th, right?
Yes.
Nine to 11:00 for the...
For the Coffee with a Cop, and 7:15 to probably 8:45 for the Walk to School Day.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Kelly?
No report.
Nick?
Yeah, just real quickly, I attended a Finance Administration Committee meeting for CalPERS this morning to represent this city on an informational item that was discussing two letters that have been sent to the committee from Senator John Morlock requesting CalPERS staff to investigate potential cost savings related to suspending COLAs for retirees and adjusting classic member pensions to Peppera-style pensions on a prospective basis. And the board ended up, there was about fifteen cities there who spoke on behalf of preparing these kind of cost analysis for, for the cities to make decisions. About six labor-related representatives were there and they spoke, and there was one member of the board, they also, all the members of the board were in the committee meeting because of the political nature of it, and one spoke in favor of, of preparing the analysis. None, and staff was not directed to do anything with the letters. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that CalPERS is not in favor of helping the cities. The message was, it's our problem, we need to deal with it. So, it was good to know that they're not supporting us.
All right, then. Doug, what do you think of that?
I'm ready to retire. No report. We won't be participating with a walking school bus on the 4th, though.
Good. David?
No report.
Margaret?
I just want to remind council, on October 3rd, we're going to have a joint meeting with the planning commission here to talk about marijuana ordinance. So, it's going to start at 5:00. It's, it's going to be a workshop, and then we'll start the council meeting at 6:00 on that day. We would have started just a little bit after 5:00, but it's going to be a lot to talk about in that one hour that we have before our council meeting. Also, Canuck Die Challenge is the first weekend in October, and they are looking for volunteers on that Saturday. They love to have people down at the Skylark where it, where it starts and ends. So, they're looking for volunteers from 12:00 to 3:00, and then again from 3:00 to 6:00. So, if anybody's interested in volunteering, you could just show up or you could let Jennifer know you're coming. Either way, they could, you know, really use volunteers. So, that's my plug for that. So, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnes?
We got to go to the California League of Cities this last weekend. It was going to be very interesting. It was a lot of information, all packed in, and I feel like, you know, we've got here some really good speakers. Makes a really wonderful context, new and interesting context throughout all the different cities. So, it was, it was really cool for my first time getting to go to that. Coming up, we have, we have over at the Silver Reese, the producers. If anybody wants to come see me on stage, you know, not on dives and being a, you know, a German onstage, come and, come and check that out. Shameless plug, not at all.
Very cool. Mayor Potem? Who wants to report?
Thank you.
Councilmember Spur.
I agree with Tim about the League of Cities. Other than that, nothing else?
Councilmember Parlett?
No report.
What?
What?
That would shock you guys. I'm kidding.
Come on, it's so fun, you must have something.
Geez, safe as temperature.
All right, well, we, we had a great turnout for the League of Cities. We had, what, eight of us, quite, quite the showing of Lakeport, and I think everyone got a lot out of it. So, that was great. So, Friday night, homecoming game, football, and parade. We'll see you guys there. Thanks for coming. See you later.